Welcome to this February the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting in the City of Charleston Planning. Commissioner Michael Charter, the chairman, joined in a couple of minutes by our Vice Chairman, Mr. Harris Sam. We're a few minutes late. Also joined by my left, the members of Mark Jackson. We did Brian Jenkins, Sunday Memphis, and my right, Kenny George. These people are volunteers appointed by Charleston City Council. And then we thank them as I do for their volunteer work and for our city of Charleston. The way we're going to meet is united is I'll read an item from the agenda into record. And we're here for staff, we're here for applicants, and we're here for anyone that supported the application. Anyone who may be opposed to the application, then the applicant will have a chance to answer any questions or brought up. If you come up to speak tonight, I'd ask you to come to the podium, tell us who you are, if you represent someone, and where you live. If you have a cell phone, I'd ask you to turn it off. Before we get going, Mr. Morgan, I think Mr. Waring, are you here? I want to recognize Keith Waring, he's on Charleston City Council, and is a longtime member of our planning commission. So it's always good to see you.
I still remember my seatbelt.
Message, that's good. Also joined by Ms. Erica Harrison, well. Mr. Morgan, you introduce any staff who presenting and then change the city agenda.
Sure, sure. So I'm Christopher Morgan, Planning Manager at the City of Charleston. Here with us tonight from our staff are Amanda Cox, our planner, he works with the Planning Commission directly. We have also Molly Connor, our Annexation Planner, Philip Overcash, Senior Planner, and our new clerk, who is Jasmine O'Neil, replacing Philip, who's moved up to the Malcolm Clerk's office.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we welcome Jasmine here. And we do have a couple of deferrals. The item number one under zoning rezoning circle, that one has been deferred, that's a planning development. And then also under zoning thirty-four Rockwood Road has been deferred as well.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. First item on our agenda is the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll say.
Great, so there's a motion. I miss Joyce to approve, second one, Miss Brian Jenkins. Any other questions or comments, all favorites, you go, I say aye. Anyone opposed, that's great, that's one, two, three, four, five, six in favor and not opposed. Next item on the agenda is deferred, number one, the rezoning. The next items, do we take two and three together, Mr. Morgan?
Well, they'll have to be separate, because they're two different requests, so yeah.
I'm gonna read them both under record if that's good.
It'd probably be good to start with number two first.
Okay, I'm the two, thirteen, Radcliffe Street, that's a, yeah, that's number four, six oh one. Oh, one, six oh two, oh, three, three, Council District Four. Oh, oh, point oh four acres, request rezoning from the first residential DR2 to GB, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. So this property is shown on the map in front of you here, from Radcliffe Street between King and St. Philip. It is just north of, well, it's in the block, north of Warren Street. It's across from a couple of church properties, the St. Patrick's Catholic Church, which is up here on the corner. And then the Catholic Diocese also has a facility directly across the street over here. And then there's some residential structures down to the left, uh, down to the south, excuse me. Now, the house that was on this property has recently been moved, I'm not sure the exact timeframe, I think it's been the last year. The applicants can go into more detail on that. But they moved the house that was on here that was in deteriorating condition, and they moved it over here to St. Philip, to the one twenty St. Philip location. So that meant that there was no longer the need for the residential zoning, this parcel. And this parcel sits in the midst of a larger parking lot, commercial parking lot, and I'll show you an image of that in a second. So the request here is to go from that DR2 residential designation to general business to match the surrounding commercial parking lot. And here you see an image of, this is an area when the house was still there, so substantial, two-story, two-and-a-half-story house, I believe, that now sits in this location here. It was moved across the parking lot successfully and being renovated. And so now this would be a larger general business zone parcel with this rezoning here. And here you also see some of the other surroundings, of course, the commercial mixed use along King Street, and then the St. Patrick's Church here, and then the Catholic Diocese facility here. There is another church a little bit further here, to the west on Radcliffe, and then some residential structures in the next block north in St. Philip as well. And in our comprehensive plan, this site is designated for city center, as is everything up and down along this portion of King Street. So with, with a recommendation like that from the comprehensive plan, from a staff standpoint, we were completely supportive of this change because it's right in line with the city center's designation and comprehensive plan. So that is where we stand on this, and. For the commission now.
Thank you. Is that still with us? Bradley, come on up. Always good to see you, sir.
Yes, Frank Bradley, resident at, in St. Michael's Alley, and owner of this property and subsequent property coming up, one twenty St. Philip's. We successfully, thanks to the DAR approval, we've moved the house at fifteen Radcliffe to one twenty St. Philip's successfully about a year ago, and the restoration is virtually complete. It's in the probably seventy or eighty percent. It's, it's been a good move, and appears to like its new home, so that's been a successful situation. We would like to have the former fifteen Radcliffe, which is the subject of this particular rezoning, rezoning to general business to match, is, just stated to match the balance of the general business zoning for the rest of the site, and it's what's called for in the comprehensive plan.
Yes, sir.
If you have any questions, if you're ready.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bradley, appreciate it. Do you want to like to speak in favor of this application? Mr. Waring, come on up, sir, Councilman Morgan.
I would, Mr. Chairman. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna give you all a little home park, if you don't mind, as a part of our.
You're always putting us to task, or do you?
I, I wear two hats on this one. I go to St. Patrick's Catholic Church, and I've been a member of that church since I was eleven. I'm sixty-nine now, so you don't have to do the math on that. A lot of years, we didn't have a parking problem. As the neighborhoods began to come back to life, to do the, during the time, you had a lot of vacancies over there, decades ago. As the neighborhood had come back to life, and info was coming out, we've got huge parking problems. The article I passed about happened a little bit more than six years ago. The city actually came out and gave tickets to people who were parking while they were in church friends. I took exception to that. It was a parking problem then, and it's a parking problem now. So this rezoning could help accommodate the neighborhood in its entirety. The second hat I'm wearing is that of City Council. I chair the Public Works Committee. When we have what we call rain bombs, you know, you get three, four inches of rain in a two-hour period, the corner of Radcliffe, or the intersection of Radcliffe and St. Philip floods, man. When the old Condon's parking lot was there, they didn't have retention rules at that time. So there wasn't any retention ponds put in to collect water hitting the impervious surface. It runs off, and it floods that intersection. With a redevelopment there, one big advantage is gonna happen, is retention will be part of that redevelopment. So as rain hits, it's not gonna run straight to the street, like anywhere in that, in that particular location, as I mentioned. And actually, it's gonna help the city solve probably one of the thousand rain problems in around the city of Charleston. So two reasons I'm supporting that, if one of the people, if there's anybody that has any questions, but I felt I'd go back to that period of time. There are four churches in that block. You've got St. Patrick's, Central Baptist, Martha Brown AME, and Marsh Street Baptist Church. We all convene around the same time, you know, we all compete for parking along with the community. So a solution is needed for us all. Good reason, really respectful, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, thank you, definitely, Waring. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in opposition to the application? Please come on up to the podium one at a time, if you would. Thank you. Come on up, tell us who you are, where you live, and if you represent someone, thank you.
Hi, everybody, I'm Elizabeth Soul Rayner, and I'm the President of Radcliffe Borough Neighborhood Association. And I'm here today to urge you to do one of two things. Either reject this request for the zoning change, or attach a requirement that any future land use actually has the support of Radcliffe Borough Neighborhood Association as a body that is supposed to be representative of wishes. This is how we tell the city what we want. We have clearly and consistently communicated, we do not want a parking garage built on this site. Why? Because we think parking is unnecessary. The rideshare programs are readily available. People could be able to, you know, take an Uber or whatever for a night out. I understand the councilperson's perspective about the churches, that's a few hours on a Sunday. We're talking about dealing with a parking garage and all the traffic noise and sort of bad behavior that can sometimes go along with parking garage, you know, seven days a week. The other thing I would say is that if you, you know, talk about what is important, when I talk to Mr. Morgan about what's important for a zoning approval, I know this is fit within the comprehensive plan. Well, one of the biggest things in that comprehensive plan is housing, and that's what Radcliffe Borough Neighborhood Association would support, whether it's student housing, apartments, workforce housing, whatever. And so we think that, you know, any kind of actual approval for the zoning change should come with something that Radcliffe Borough Neighborhood Association wants. I don't think that you can actually change a zone and attach something like that right now. So in conclusion, Radcliffe Borough Neighborhood Association officially stands to the vote, thank you.
Tell me your name one more time, I'm sorry.
Sure, Elizabeth Soul S O U L E Rayner, B R A I N A R D.
Thank you, ma'am, sure. Anyone else opposed to the application? Come on up, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bill Will, the O'Wiley Vice President for Radcliffe Borough Neighborhood Association. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the crime stat figures that the police department keeps on, on their website. If you were to look at Radcliffe Street and Morris Street immediately towards north, and move three blocks west, you would find a significant unbroken line of icons, which is crime, crime events. Those, those events are being driven by King Street. People going to King Street, coming back to King Street, being people having their vehicles and themselves victimized, coming and going to King Street. I think we should keep the rowdy and the chaos on King Street and not put it into the neighborhoods. If you approve fifteen Radcliffe going from residential to commercial, you up the traffic on both of those streets. As a side, if you go to that map and you look at Warren Street, the street one below, there are very few crime events. Why? You have a dorm, you have people, you have a couple of restaurants, you have people, you have activity on that street. You don't have the amount of crime that you have on Morris and Radcliffe. Please consider the character of the neighborhood, what you're doing to the character of the neighborhood if you change that lot and that strip from a residential to commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on up, gentlemen.
I'm Julie Skinner, and thank you for letting me sleep tonight and volunteering. I live at the corner of Radcliffe and St. Philip Street. I have firsthand observation and knowledge for the past twenty years that I've been at home. And with my feelings and swearing, I'd like to disagree with the flooding issues. Those, when it rains very, very, very hard for a few minutes, it does pool. When, if the, if the drains are not covered by leaves, sticks and trash, it drains. As soon as that rain lets off, those drains are cleared. I, I watch it every time it happens. It never exceeds the top of the curb. It never comes in my driveway, it is not a flooding issue. I would never, I don't even have flood insurance. I'm not required to have flood insurance where I live on my block, so, or my corner. So I have to disagree there. Also, the church parking in the mornings on Sunday, sorry, I'm a little hoarse, and.
All right, you're fine.
I, I can provide photos, I take photos of the ample parking, especially on Sunday mornings before church. I realize there's, you know, a couple of churches competing for parking there, but how long have those parking, this church has been there? Quite some time, and everybody seems to manage. And like Liz said, it's only for a couple of hours. So, and then these are just comments I've noticed from previous years. As far as Doyle's comments on crime, there is a significant amount of crime in my neighborhood. I have cameras, I have sixteen cameras on my house, and I capture things that no one here would want me to discuss at this meeting. Also, another point, there are many parking garages already in the neighborhood or vicinity. I don't think it's fair to our neighborhood to take on the traffic and the pollution and the crime. You know, parking garages are the third most common places for violent crimes to happen in the country. The third. And I don't know, you know, I've been presented with parking garage plans in the past. I don't know if that's still on the table, I hope it's not. But we are all against it. Now to my speech, which will take a few minutes, I apologize. I'm here today as a concern resident to strongly object to proposed rezoning request for the property in question. Me and my family will be directly and negatively impacted if you approve this rezoning request. We all know the real reason behind the rezoning, to allow Mr. Bromley to move forward with his plan to rebuild a parking garage. We must look at this rezoning not just as a simple request, but as a matter of integrity, fairness, and legal principles. We respectfully argue that this rezoning may constitute spot zoning. Spot zoning occurs when the practice of rezoning a specific parcel of land without a legitimate purpose benefits or serves the interest of a particular property owner or developer in a way that disrupts the broader neighborhood's welfare. Courts have regularly ruled that spot zoning is invalid because it harms the character of the neighborhood and undermines the integrity of the residential framework. Zoning decisions must be made in a way that can aid the general good. Rezoning, where we're facing, appears to fail to meet the essential criteria for approval. Lack of legitimate public purpose and failure to meet burden of proof. One critical question remains unanswered, what is the purpose of for this rezoning? There has been no clear and compelling justification provided for why this change is necessary, especially when there is no demonstrated neighborhood benefit. This lack of a clear purpose is another reason why we must oppose the proposed rezoning. As courts have stated, zoning changes must serve, which is a public purpose, not the private interest of one individual. The current proposal does not change this requirement. Applicant must also demonstrate that the benefit of rezoning outweigh any potential harms to the surrounding community. Failure to do so shows the lack of need for the zoning. Incompatibility with surrounding, with the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed rezoning would allow for a use that is incompatible with the surrounding residential properties. If we were to allow this change, we would be setting a precedent for rezoning in ways that are inconsistent with the neighborhood's established character and have detrimental, detrimental effects that harm the residential nature of our community. Adverse impact on property values and community well-being. Research and comparative analysis have shown that rezoning a property in this manner could harm surrounding property values and the character of the neighborhood. Increased traffic noise, crime, safety concerns, and pollution would significantly affect residents' quality of life and lead to a lower, and lead to low property values, which cannot be ignored. The higher density from commercial use would negatively impact the neighborhood. Mr. Bromley will benefit from rezoning while the residents of Radcliffe Borough will suffer the consequences. Inproper zoning changes directly contradict the intention of zoning laws to protect communities from incompatible land use. Violation of equal protection principle. It is critical to note that this proposed rezoning could violate principles of equal protection. Spot zoning, especially when it favors one property owner without any legitimate public purpose, could be seen as discriminatory. If zoning decisions are made arbitrarily, it undermines the constitutional principle that all citizens should be treated equally under the law. When my property was up for commercial rezoning, it was denied. My property sits diagonal from the property with the rezoning requests. Why should Mr. Bromley's request be approved when my property was denied? I view this as biased if Mr. Bromley's request was approved. In conclusion, this proposed rezoning must, and request, appears to fall into the category of spot zoning. It lacks legitimate neighborhood purpose, with proportionally benefits to single property owners, and disrupts the established character of the community. It fails to meet the requirements for zoning change and can have far-reaching consequences for our neighborhood, residents, and its future. We urge the board to adhere to proposed rezoning request. By doing so, we will maintain the integrity of our zoning framework, check the interests of Radcliffe Borough residents, and ensure that zoning decisions are made for the public good in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thanks. Anyone else in opposition? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is Peter Rayner, B R A I N A R D. I'm a resident of Radcliffe Borough and represent the neighborhood myself. Thank you for letting me speak for just one here. I'd like to speak in opposition to this zoning change. I understand that your, the idea is to change, that you have a comprehensive plan and add this to business. Looking at this little county property, while it is near a lot of other business properties, this particular property is one twenty-fifth of one acre. On a quarter acre, one acre is one twenty-fifth of an acre. Adding this, all, all this really does is allows the final domino to fall. If you approve this to go to general business, developer has say, you can build a parking garage there. Without this, you can't build a parking garage, that you're supposed to be fit, if you want to. As a resident of Radcliffe Borough, we just know that adding parking garages brings more cars into the central business district and into the, into the peninsula below the cross town. And I think that's specifically against the, you know, complex, complex plan. They want less people driving in here, waiting for things like the low line, and more people to walk and ride their bikes at the very walkable city, there's no need to add another parking garage. Also, very unattractive for the whole neighborhood. You can see most of it there on St. Philip and Radcliffe on that corner, you have nice sightlines. You can see all the rest of the church steeples, and you can see King Street. If you walk on St. Philip Street and there's a four or five-story parking garage, you're not gonna be able to see any of that. It's a real blight in the middle of the neighborhood. There are no other, you know, significant buildings, stores right in that little spot. It's a neighborhood of some rental housing and some, a lot of single-family housing. The other part of this is, in terms of housing, it'd be a great spot to add dorms or apartment, you know, some apartment house or something like that. You know, the College of Charleston is certainly looking to allow people to not live in, essentially, my neighborhood as much because it's too expensive. And residents of South Carolina who come to College of Charleston because it's a pretty good deal as a, as a state-sponsored college, many of them cannot afford the average of seventeen hundred dollars a month for a bed, the rent, you know, in our neighborhood or in Annemar or anywhere else in, in the city. And can't afford twenty thousand dollars a year in rent. The housing, which is also, I looked on, on page two of your agenda, it's workforce housing and little amendments, that, that's certainly part of the complex comprehensive plan. So just know that if you vote to pass this and make this change to this little itty-bitty one twenty-fifth of one acre, that essentially is the last straw. And, you know, by a year or so from now, you could be digging in the ground and putting up a giant parking garage, which is just very unattractive and not a, not a good use of what most people in Charleston would want. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for coming out. Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Mr. Bromley, would you like to address anything that was brought up, or? Oh, ma'am, are you in opposition?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I would just like to say a few things.
Tell us who you are, ma'am, just for the record.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say a few things.
Tell us, tell us your name, if you would.
My name is Annie Sitton.
Okay.
And I live in Radcliffe Borough, I've lived here for twenty years.
Okay, thank you.
And just recently, when, when they were attempting to move the house, when they were trying to move the house, I canvassed the area and found that the vast majority of the people in Radcliffe Borough did not want a parking garage. They wanted the house to stay there, but they absolutely did not want a parking garage. It's, it's an old idea, the whole thing of putting another parking garage in the downtown area is just an old idea. I think we need to start moving away from that, and I think we need to start planning our city so that we have more pedestrian, a friend, a more pedestrian-friendly, a bike-friendly area. You put a parking garage in there, and it's going to increase the traffic. Right now, even the college kids are scared to death to ride their bicycles downtown. You see them riding their bicycles for a while, and then pretty soon you don't see them anymore. I have a bicycle, and I'm terrified to ride my bicycle downtown. And I rode bicycles most of my life. It's not safe with all the traffic. When I was canvassing the area, and, and just, I mean, in general, we need more housing. We have housing shortage downtown. And when I was canvassing the area, I spoke with a lot of the developers downtown. And they were very interested in that block of property. It's a very nice area where they can put in a few homes and, and add more, more residents to that, to the, to the Radcliffe area. The only thing that, I'm just looking at my notes here, you know, it's, it's very simple to just start doing what MUSC has done and have remote parking. You know, we can, we can have parking garages built north of town, there's lots of space out there, and they can have shuttles bringing people in, things like for seaweed, things like for, for, for the Saturday markets. There's lots of, there's a lot of activities coming on, going on downtown, and it's easy to bring the people in close to, to the, to the pathways and, and have them park out there and, and shuttle them in. And I think that's the way the city should start, start looking to plan. The only thing that a parking garage is going to do is it's going to increase traffic, it's going to increase all the drunkenness down on King Street in the evenings, and it's going to increase crime, and it's probably going to affect our property and, 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 you know, the values in that area. So I am absolutely against it, and I know that the majority of the people in the Radcliffe Borough are against it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in opposition to the application? Sir, come on up.
Hello, my name is David Skinner, I'm living, I'm, sorry, I wasn't prepared to speak today. I just thought I was coming here. So I live on the corner of Brad and Radcliffe Street and St. Philip Street. I'm against the build of rezoning or the building of parking lot, I'm not really sure what we're talking about. Mainly just rezoning, yeah. But my main points are why there was the house moved and then the rezoning. Why was the rezoning not done first and then the house moved? That just seemed a little backwards to me. Also, the building of the parking lot, I would say, me, I have a lot of college funds because I live downtown. They all say they don't want it, they have people behind me. I asked them what they. They all say they don't want to. They have people behind me. I asked them what they saw, but I thought it was a terrible idea. Why? Because, first of all, it's hard enough. Me, I have a car. I don't want to go driving around downtown. I want to go to like James Island, whatever. I, I do not like driving downtown. The traffic is terrible. People like, just people acting stupid. The main focus should be to get cars off the street of downtown. It's not helping, like, it's not helping anybody, really. Now, with the church's situation is, I see what the point is, but really though, behind the church, there's a whole parking garage with a, I don't even know what you call them. There's a building with like a man's face on it. They got all that parking there. And where the house was moved, there's a whole parking lot there. And that's just on Sundays. They can use all of that. That's just on Sundays. But, on a regular weekday, you would have, at least, I walk by that parking garage or the parking lot probably, I don't know, a few times a day because my dad works on the next corner of Warren. So, I have to walk past that where the house was. So, and there's like, I don't know, maybe ten, fifteen cars there. Nobody is parking down here. Nobody's looking to park downtown. Always look, nobody's coming downtown going, oh, great. I'm taking my car. I'm gonna look for a parking spot. I'm gonna look for paying for parking. And, yeah, sorry. This for me is just, I just don't agree with it. Mainly, I have a little brother too, who also bring, like, how do I also say it's not a big crime? It's not really gonna bring anything good to the city. I'd be really surprised if it is used at all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else? Come on up, sir.
I, I apologize. Just a little impromptu, I wasn't prepared to speak today, but I've lived in the neighborhood for twenty seven years. My name is Radcliffe Bruce. I live at sixty-six Radcliffe Street. In the twenty seven years that I've lived here, I've seen the neighborhood develop from what it was when I first moved in to what it's becoming now. And that's a good uphill climb, especially a good investment for a lot of people who live in the neighborhood. Rezoning this lot is the next step in a process that has been going on for years. Mr. Brumley has wanted to put a parking garage there. And the residents, every time it comes up, they say no. And he backs off and he stays backed off for a while. And then sure enough, he comes back up and wants to do it again. I have never seen an environmental impact study about what's that going to do to the Radcliffe Borough area ever presented to anybody that I know of. And maybe there is one in file, or maybe he's not supposed to have one or doesn't have to have one. But I know perfectly well that if you increase the density of the parking in that area, it is going to change the traffic on St. Philip's, on Radcliffe, on King. It's going to affect the whole neighborhood. And when we first moved here, one of the residents went through and they got a petition for speed bumps because the cars were accelerating so quickly down Radcliffe from Ravledge to King that people couldn't get out of the way with their pets fast enough for the people that were mostly young people that were accelerating up that street. Now, I just saw somebody coming here to this evening that went down St. Philip's that passed through an intersection to get past a car that was probably only doing five miles over the speed limit. And they needed to go a lot faster than that. This is going to just screw up everything as far as whenever the bars let out. I can't imagine what the noise is going to be or what the crime is going to be for people passing through the neighborhood. It's ridiculous to me that we keep coming up against this thing when the neighborhood does not want that there. They don't want a bridge to an urban environment. I lived in downtown Chicago for fourteen years. I'm used to parking garages. And I'm used to what they do to the property values of the condo buildings around them. And I'm used to the crime that goes on with them. I had the opportunity to have physical therapy at Rover St. Francis this last year for about four months. And I was warned periodically about watch out for the parking garage because it's problematic. I'm six-two, I'm sixty-eight. I am not some little creature slumping through the area being afraid of my safety. But if they're warning me about it, but they're not telling me why they're warning me about it, I want to know what goes on in their parking garage. I'm afraid of what's going to go on in that parking garage because of the amount of drinking that happens on King Street and those people all coming out at night. I don't get why we're even going down this, this, this road for a city that is supposed to be exemplary of environments that people want to live in, in urban environments. And that doesn't include parking to draw more people into the area. I guess that's all I really want to say is I want to see an environmental impact study with what it does to the traffic and what it's going to do to the neighborhoods around it, including Elliott Borough and Cannonboro. That's what I want to see out of this. But I am totally against rezoning it because that is the next step in something that's been going on for seven years now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming out. Anyone else in opposition to the application? Anyone else? Final call. Who else in opposition? I'm asking Mr. Brumley to respond. Christopher, just reiterate, I know Mr. Lane just walked in.
The city's position was, just reiterate, we're in support of this. It's in line with our comprehensive plan that, you know, says that this is all an area of the entire block here between Radcliffe, Warren, St. Philip and King is in a block is a area that's in our city centers. And so, mixed use and commercial uses are one of the types of things that happen.
Yeah, I apologize, Mr. Brumley. If you'd like to respond to anything that was said.
I have our, our architect here.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Come on up, sir.
I'm Joe Schmidt, Evans Schmidt Architects. I was the original architect for Warren Place Projects. Warren Place Project is in the footprint of the Conings Department Store, which rebuilt a specific number of buildings on the project site directly related to the zoning required for the Warren Place Project. Evans Schmidt is not a firm that ever comes in and asks for variances of any sort. We try to meet exactly what zoning requires. And at that time, the number of dorm spaces and the size of those buildings are directly proportional to parking requirements that they dictated. So, in other words, the buildings could have been bigger if we had more parking available. Maybe smaller if we didn't have. There's a direct relationship between the number of spaces in that lot, which are all for the college and related to those dorms. When we put fifteen Radcliffe onto the site of one-twenty, we have, we are now in violation of that zoning because we have less parking by taking that space up. So, they are now parking on the site of fifteen Radcliffe on a gravelled surface. But I don't believe it's supposed to be parking using commercial parking on DR two site. If this, one way or the other, this parcel needs to be general business so that we can pick up the parking that we lost one-on-one. The concept keeps coming up of build more dorms, build more housing. Again, the only way we can do that is to build a parking garage as part of that project to accommodate Warren Place, which was already being built and zoned properly for its amount of parking. And then we would have to pick up the parking for whatever was built on top of that, in addition to that, as more dorms or whatever. Bottom line is, we need that to be GB to legitimately be parking on that site to replace what we lost.
Thank you, sir. That'll close the public aspect. Yes, sir. Just wait, wait. Since you spoke, but the applicant will let you speak.
Thank you. See, now I have no time to ask the applicant. I actually think it's a good idea. I do want to speak up for our police department because a number of people spoke about crime being a problem. While here, and I do have a cell phone for the chief of police, I actually texted the chief. And I asked, I said, hello, chief, I'm at the zoning commission meeting. Does the city have high crime statistics of crime entered around Radcliffe, all city parking garage? His answer is, no, sir. We routinely hit those areas. Doesn't. I can pull the actual numbers, but the most we deal with is an occasional vehicle break. No serious issues come to mind off the top of my head. The crime is historically low on the peninsula. So, I'll say I thank them. Now, because when this comes forward to city council, I'll make sure that the chief has the accurate crime statistics. I didn't know that was gonna be an issue at this meeting. As far as the flooding at the corner of Radcliffe and St. Philip's, it does what they're doing. The rain bombs that come. Now, let me say, when we have king tides, a lot of the drainage, people don't realize, eventually goes to the river. When king tides come, those pipes fill up with water from the river, from the harbor. And it does drain down when the tide goes back out. But during that period of time, the end of period of time, that thing comes up, like, so does the corner of Boris and St. Philip Street. Now, this project won't help the drainage on Boris and St. Philip, but it will help the drainage on Boris, I mean, on St. Philip and Radcliffe. So, I thought, and take a look at the police department. When you start, it's a wonderful neighborhood to live in. I think these people have already attested it. But if the crime rate was so bad, I doubt that that neighborhood would flourish the way it does. So, I thought that point needed to be made because I will make that point when it comes forward to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brumley. Ma'am, we can't go back and forth because if I let you speak, then I have to let the applicant respond to anything you're saying.
Well, like some pointed out, the parking lot that, for the, the dorms, is never full. It's never full. And again, twenty years I've lived there, it's never full. And once again, I will say flooding is not an issue. I, I, I lived there for twenty years.
I appreciate you understanding.
If my property is defined for rezoning, which Mr. Brumley.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. We're gonna close, instead with one more comment with Mr. Schmidt or Mr. Brumley, like, say anything else. I mean, I always like to let the applicant respond if there was something brought up. Just give it one second. No? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
So, and this for Mr. Schmidt. Um, the, the one-twenty, uh, St. Philip Street, right? That's the address we're talking about. I remember, I think when I was on B I, there was an application for a demolition on that site. Is that the same one? Mr. Schmidt? Was that same house? Was one of those houses?
Fifteen Radcliffe was moved to one-twenty site, which was a GB parking site.
Okay. I guess my question is, is on St. Philip Street, was there, did, did you do enough?
Oh, no, that, that was an asphalt parking lot. We had to cut out the asphalt to make it into a residential site.
Okay.
Great. That's to close the public aspect of this. And commission members, come, questions, comments, motions?
Mr. Morgan, is there an area of view? I mean, this, we looked at it, yeah, this for a second to have that out.
So, this is before the house was moved. And here's the parking area that was on the site at one-twenty St. Philip that the house was moved to.
This, this is, it's not the same here. And these two exist. Okay. And there were, and so these two that were existing, there wasn't, I guess that was what I was trying to remember.
They're still there. They're still there. Yeah. Now, there, there's three houses in a row.
Okay.
So, I, Mr. Morgan, another question is, is the parking area around Radcliffe? Is that all owned by the same, is that all one deal? Is that gonna be combined in that entire area, made into a parking garage?
The one-twenty St. Philip's is next item on the agenda.
This is all one parcel. So, I believe that's Mr. Brumley because it's all associated with the Warren Place. You see how the parcel lines go all the way here and include the Warren Place buildings?
That's right.
So, it's all part of the same parcel.
So, that, so adding that parking, adding the Radcliffe Borough, then only the last piece to make that entire area the parking garage, correct?
I mean, it could. I mean, again, when you zone GB, you can do a variety of things. You can build student housing, build stores, all that kind of thing. But there has been discussion about a parking.
How tall would a parking garage be in that area?
I don't know if we have a height map on that one. I think it's like a four or so story area, but we'd have to look. It would have to be in line with what the city height districts are.
So, I, I do have some comments about this application. So, I know we're talking about zoning and obviously planning commission is a recommending body. So, we cannot pass it that it would go to city council and have its, its reading. So, we can only recommend. But, I, I think there's two competing, there's two interests, I think, that are happening here, which is you have a parcel that can be zoned GB and would not necessarily be considered spot zoning primarily because the amount of parcels that are located around it are, are zoned GB. So, it would, it would negate, we would, there would be an argument to say that it is not spot zoning. The second thing, though, is this, is that, you know, the history of this property has always been, I think, about the development of a parking lot. I remember maybe about ten, yeah, ten years ago, there was a question about pushing up an old lady, which was proverbially the discussion about one of these houses off to the side for a demolition request. And, and further north of that, in Cannonboro, Elliott Borough, Radcliffe Borough, and Cannonboro, Elliott Borough, had another discussion about another parking garage site that was at, that was, that's located one block, one and a half blocks over on St. Philip Street. And so, the issue, I think, for us, for me rather, is the multiple number of uses. And, and the fact that, you know, building a podium style parking garage isn't necessarily the only option here. I mean, there are plenty of other interesting ways you can handle parking. But also, I think, one of the questions that I think we need y'all to consider is the fact that a lot of our zoning is driven by parking and meeting those parking requirements and going through the process of a, a land use rewrite of our code. Maybe, may also indicate how we treat parking specifically downtown when it comes to residential. So, I, I think overall is that I struggle with this application because Radcliffe Borough, we all know that y'all have a very strong interest in the way your neighborhood develops. From, be it from Robert Ballard, Sally, they all have been there for decades. I've, you know, I, I mean, I bicycle, but I cart, golf cart down those streets for every day.
You're pretty dangerous, huh?
Well, you know, you gotta put your pedal to the metal on those golf carts, twenty-five miles. But I don't say that in jest. It is, it can be dangerous at night. I, especially when you're coming off of St. Philip Street and having, you know, it is, it's really supposed to be more of a pedestrian area because of the college students that are there. And I don't necessarily know if the, really the question is whether or not you have the requisite amount of parking or what you can do. Parking on a commercial lot, doing commercial parking on a residential because that could also be solved variance. But I think there are some other ways to solve your parking challenges because, you know, we, I mean, I've seen it done before where you can put thirty-three parking spaces on a site that's less than point zero four acres. But that takes a little bit of heavy lifting and some creativity. So, I think there, so I think the challenge is, is we're limited by the fact that it wouldn't be spot zoning, but we're also cognizant of the fact that we need to be cognizant of the fact that they were still running a parking garage. And, and that, this is the form, because you can essentially park your, you know, the parking site, the parking of the site can happen. It's just how you park it and within the numbers. So, because the use of GB is so, is so broad, but every time you put some type of use of residential, it's going to require parking. Regardless of whatever, this one piece is not going to hold for parking down there. Because you could literally, you know, build whatever you want and design it around that DR two and still try and park requirement. And, and I do understand those dangers. Nobody, if, if you've ever walked on the stairwell of a parking garage, it is something that you do not want to experience yourself. Especially if an elevator doesn't work. So, I, I actually, I hear what you all. Especially when an elevator doesn't work. So I, I actually, I hear what you all are saying about this parking garage. It is not something that anybody wants. I actually like, you know, the back, looking at the back of a plumber when he's working on your house. That's what it feels like when you're looking at a parking garage. So but unfortunately, that's not the form to talk about. This is not the form to talk about design and 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 what you need, but I do hear what you all are saying.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Morgan? What I'm understanding is Warren Place takes up all the parking spaces that are there now. So if college housing or some type of multifamily housing was proposed, it still wouldn't work because there's not enough parking available to accommodate it or what it would require.
I don't know the numbers of spaces that Warren Place has um over here. Uh, that would be a question for the applicants. But you know, if you were building a new use here, obviously it would have its own parking requirements based on the codes and things like that. So a a a new use here would need probably more parking than state.
So just trying to clarify that. So that's.
I, this is a very difficult decision that we have to make. Um, I perfectly understand and 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 the homeowners and and Radcliffe Borough does not want this. I mean, that is, I mean, they made that very clear and I appreciate that. Um, I disagree with the spot zoning, because if anything, the D R two, the house that was there is actually spot zoning on a G B. And it should, you know, that, I look at that more as spot zoning than I do changing that to G B. My challenge is and and I do not think the house should have been moved before, I don't agree with Mr. Schmidt's idea that for decision that you have to have the parking on that, that that should have been done ahead of time. That's not our problem. Um, so that that kind of negates anything in reference to that. Um that, you know, so I don't have an issue with, you know, it it's G B all around. And that's D R two going to a commercial and swapping that out. I I'm just concerned with the owners not wanting it in their neighborhood. I'm not concerned from the zoning aspect of it. I'm concerned because the neighbors don't want it. So I think that's our decision.
Other commission members?
Yeah, I'll speak.
Uh, so saying, I I guess I'm gonna speak up for urbanism. Uh, this is a city.
Um, that street on the far right side of the map is King Street. It's the primary shopping street for this part of South Carolina. Uh, I I don't uh I feel like one of the, one of the nicest things about the city of Charleston, if you're, if you live here, is the ability of to find a parking garage. Uh, and uh, I, I, you know, I know Evanson, Evan, the work of Evanson Schmidt, they designed this building. I think this design is beautiful. They designed the redesign of City Hall. Uh, I think that City Hall is a beautiful building. They designed um the Doc Street Theater uh renovation. They're good architects and, you know, the city of Charleston has been recognized for designing and building parking garages, facilities that fit into their neighborhoods. Um, and uh, I, I personally don't see anything wrong if the developer chooses to build a parking garage on this site. Um, I think parking garages serve shopping districts nicely and um anyhow, I I I understand the concerns of the neighborhood, but respectfully, they live in the heart of our city and um you know, I I I believe this is not an inappropriate use on the site.
Is that a motion or?
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve. Okay.
Motion to approve. Um, other commission members speak? You know.
Or are we making a motion on number, or making a motion on number one?
It's only on.
Number two.
It's only on number two on the agenda. That's all.
On the chair.
Right, fifteen Radcliffe Street. You know, and I hear Mr. Lusane, I hear the other folks, I hear the you folks out there, and I, and I don't disagree with them. I think Mr. Lusane has a strong argument that think it can be done, it can be done right. I think it can be done right. And I don't think we'll allow it not to be done in the correct way. I don't think the city staff will. I don't think that B A R, which would have to go before that, will allow it to be done not right. So I hear what staff's recommendation was, so I'm gonna support the motion of uh Mr. Lusane, and I'll, and I'll second the motion. Other comments, questions? Okay, there's a motion to approve by Mr. Lusane on item number two, fifteen Radcliffe, by second motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So the reason why I wanna vote aye is because it is, it it's not spot zoning. And there's multiple uses, but we're approving the, we're approving the zoning, not, not the, not the use.
Just a zone.
We're recommending approval of the zoning, not the use.
Of course, right. So the motion is approved by Mr. Lusane. I'm seconded. Uh, again, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion to approve from um, from D R two to G B, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So one, two, let's see, three, four, five, six, seven, seven. Anyone in opposition? No one in opposition, so that item is approved. The next item on the agenda ties into this, obviously, is number three, one twenty Saint Phillips, Peninsula T M S, number four, six, oh, one, oh.
It's a drinking.
Four, six, oh, one. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming again. Four, six, oh, one, six, oh, two, oh, three, one, Council District four, point oh, eight acres. Press is owning a G B to D R one. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, and so uh obviously you are now familiar with this block, and this is the site that the house was moved to. And the applicants had been willing to change the zoning on that to the D R one district, which is compatible with the adjoining parcels and also across the street. And um, this is, as we mentioned earlier, in the city center, so obviously D R one would work in that area as well as the G B that already was uh uh recommended for approval. So our staff is recommending for this change and uh it comes to the convention.
Very thank you. Mr. Runway, come on up, sir.
Yeah, we should, we're in the neighborhood had stayed for this uh next piece, because it's an integral part of it.
Yes, sir.
In two steps, uh, we successfully moved the house from fifteen Radcliffe, which was totally dilapidated and was almost demolition by neglect when we purchased it. It has the support of churches, uh, has the support of the former owner of the property, Marion Bennett, African American granddaughter of Minister who built fifteen Radcliffe, gives a little support of what we're doing. It's written over there here. Um, when it was first proposed to be, what we were gonna do with one twenty Saint Phillips, I said to the staff, to the neighborhood, we met with the Federation Society, we met with Mr. Eric Charleston's uh foundation, we have met with the Radcliffe Borough Neighborhood Association and told them that they were aware of what we were doing. Uh, my proposal was, well, the house that we moved from fifteen Radcliffe to one twenty Saint Philip could be accommodated there. You could put residential in a G B zoning, which that was, it was part of our parking lot. So we took our existing lot and now I'm proposing, and not regarding to it, that we change that zoning from G B to D R one. And that it be always single family. It can't be a restaurant, it can't be a vape shop. We didn't have to do that. It seemed to be, to be the right thing to do. It's twice as large as the one that we moved it from. So we've netted, we doubled the single family square footage and uh the overall site. An excellent job with the restoration of the house. It'll be complete in about sixty days. So we think this follows and makes the most sense to do the right thing and lay and change its property from, you know, just a single family. So we made that recommendation when we didn't have to, but they could drive them there.
Great, thank you, sir. Anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the application? For that to close the public aspect of this, commission members, under approval, who've approved by Mr. Lusane, second my this last is the project.
So, Erica Harrison.
Ms. Harrison, y'all fighting over the second?
Everyone's excited to down that one.
Who's got the, who's got the second?
Erica.
Second, who's for approval, Ms. Harrison, by vote, is the second to the motion. Uh, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. And I'm in opposition, seven, thank you, Malakos. Great, thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Uh, the next item on the agenda is Mr. Waring, again, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Dan.
We always like having you. Comprehensive plan amendments. That would be uh number one, comprehensive plan amendment for affordable housing A tax. Best to amend city comprehensive plan to include city of Charleston housing impact analysis for Senate Bill S two eighty-four, now known as Act fifty-seven, which allows for accommodations tax A tax to support local workforce housing. Mr. Morgan?
Okay, so I'm not gonna do most of the presentation on this, but I will just introduce, obviously, you all know that you don't see a whole lot of comprehensive plan amendments, so there certainly are some things that we take very seriously. They also have a certain process they have to go through as far as public hearings and different types of notices and things like that, which are being done for these. Uh, that's why we have two kind of going forward together. Um, and um, just so you know, that this is also gonna then be presented to our community development committee of council tomorrow, and then um we go to full council for their view, their vote on the, whatever the fourth Tuesday is in March, I should remember that name, that date, but I don't have it in my head. So anyway, uh, but we have folks from our housing and community development department, as well as our legal staff to kind of guide you through this, and so I will let them kind of tell you all what's going on with this first.
Um, Rebecca Dayon, the Deputy Director of Housing and Community Development. Um, and as Christopher mentioned, we need to amend the comprehensive plan to include the uh housing impact analysis, so we can get the fifteen percent in accommodations tax that will be um allocated towards affordable housing. That equates to approximately two million a year. Um, I will defer to finance for the, an exact figure on that. Um, this is a high level overview of what we put into our housing impact analysis. So um, we did get input from legal, internal partners, um also other jurisdictions um on uh the analysis, and we also included in ours some of the challenges that are faced in affordable housing in Charleston. So we included an employment analysis as well as what the current market housing prices are going for, and then also our programs, what our development and construction costs are for both for sale, rent and rehabilitation. Um, part of the bill requires also action on the long-term impact of the ordinance. Um, you can go to the next slide. So like I said, I don't, did they get the actual full housing impact analysis or just in their package? Does this, okay, I can provide that if you want the full document. These are some highlights of um some of the challenges that we face in affordable housing. Um it, obviously, low wages, high housing costs. Um, then also uh the peninsula is very small, there's a lack of available buildable land. I only included the square mile of the peninsula, not the full city of Charleston on the highlights. Um, also, the population is not, is growing faster than we can build. Um, we were often deemed by HUD as a prioritized geography because of that factor. Um, also, different typology of housing is not available. It's mostly single family. Um, and then you can see the average median sale price of single family houses. And um, these were taken, I believe, in July, so they may have even gone up, but a single family house is averaging over seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, we can go to the next slide. So for us in our programs, um, we offer first time home buyers, so as you can imagine, we have to put a considerable amount of subsidy to make that affordable. Um, also, the average cost associated with both um for sale, rental housing construction averages about three hundred dollars per square foot. Um, we included in the overall analysis some of the most recent developments as well as some of our most recent preservation efforts that have been completed. Um, preservation efforts range in in cost from a roof replacement being twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand to substantial rehabilitation costs anywhere from a hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and these are home repairs that keep people in their neighborhood, their owner occupied, they could otherwise not afford them. So, there's influx of accommodations tax money would be very helpful in affordable housing. Um, and then the last slide, I think it speaks to the long-term impact, we base our analysis on historical data from our programs and average costs. Um, then also, it will not only facilitate the expansion of those programs, gap financing for affordable housing opportunities and leveraging opportunities. That is it in a nutshell.
Very thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Um, I have to go to reception. I'm returning to getting over to Mr. Lusane, by Chevy Lusane. If I don't go to reception, I'll be in big trouble. Appreciate it. I have read over the presentation as well, the next presentation of Mr. Satil, and I do, I know I'm not here to vote, but I support those that read over. Thank you, Mr. Lusane.
Would anyone like to be heard in favor of the comprehensive plan amendment, number one? Thank you.
Yes, hi, I'm Carol Jackson. Um, I'm here to um fully support the amendment um to be able to incorporate, um, I hope it's more than fifteen percent as time goes on, but definitely the use of accommodations tax uh for the purpose of housing affordability, attainability, however you wanna talk about it. Um, I like to think about it. I like the flexibility of the uses of the funds. There are a lot of programs, or there need to be a lot more programs, but the programs that are available to a lot of public, private uses for housing are prescribed and very competitive for the fact that we have our own, you know, at least an additional pot of money to use for the purposes that were were identified to y'all, I think is very important to our city's future. Um, obviously, the devil is in the detail for how this fund is gonna be implemented and, you know, put to good use, but I personally have explicit trust in our Director of Housing and Community Development and our C CFO. So I think that um we should say yes to this important plan amendment. And if you don't mind, Mr. Vice Chairman, I would like to just say my own support for the urban waterfront district amendment as well. I think it's been a long time in the coming, um, and it really does begin the process where, again, the devil is in the details with the contract uh developer buyer of the property, but without the amendment uh to the comprehensive plan, we can't even get started with those entitlements that will definitely provide the community um as much input and and control of what is built on a very important piece of our, of our city's waterfront. So thanks very much.
Anybody else like to be heard in favor of the comp plan amendment? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the comp? Okay, hearing none. Public hearing is closed. You have a motion?
Yep, I do. Um, I think I mentioned it before. And I said. And I second it.
Ms. Brian Jenkins?
Yes.
I have one question, Christopher. Is all future planning area, that's all on the waterfront?
What are this? We're only doing. For the comments, all those in favor of compliment number one? Yeah.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven minutes. All right, compliment amendment number two, six, Mr. Morgan? All right, so this relates to a site that's, you are very familiar with, um, from discussions over the last few years. And um, uh, this relates to the future land use designation that's within the comprehensive plan for this site. And um, lots of discussion, there was a previous development plan, things like that, so the community is very well aware of the potential of this site, and I think there were some concerns about previous plans, and so those. I think there were some concerns about previous plans, and so those uh, kind of came to the fore, and so there's been a whole lot more discussion. Just a quick little recap of some of the things that have gone on in reference to this. Of course, um, this was uh, all going on uh, from June two thousand twenty-three to March two thousand twenty-four. Um, huge amount of public input, a lot of this coordinated by the Riley Center uh, as they were looking to help create a path forward for the Union Pier site. Uh, so a huge amount of involvement from folks, so we're the reason we're kind of giving this background is to say that I think we've heard a lot from the community about some of the thoughts for this site and some of the things that people would like to see here. Uh, this even led to, you know, from the city standpoint, we were working on this uh, kind of idea of a future land use designation in the comprehensive plan for sites like the Union Pier site, and I even took a waterfront tour with a number of folks. Um, ultimately, the draft language that you're going to see tonight uh, was presented to a group of stakeholders, that were a lot of the same folks that were on that waterfront tour and involved in all those aspects, including a lot of our key advocacy organizations in town, a lot of our key neighborhoods. So there has been a lot of input into this, and, and it's, it's a lot of words, and it's probably a lot more words than we typically have for a, a land use designation in the comprehensive plan, but it shows that people are very, very interested in the site. And I think that that speaks well of Charleston, that there's so much attention to detail for, you know, individual sites here. Just to give a quick refresher, these are our typical future land use categories that are in the comprehensive plan. They range from, you know, the rural areas that are outside of the urban growth boundaries, suburban edge, suburban, our neighborhood categories, our neighborhood edge, which is along a lot of key corridors in our suburban areas, to our city centers, and then some of our more specialized categories like campus and job center, industrial parks. And then um, one of the new things that our comprehensive plan brought in was this idea of the low impact and conserve, because there are a lot of areas that have low uh, elevation, that don't have plans for future uh, protection around them, that uh, could be challenged in the future and, and should have special attention paid to how those would be developed in the future. Um, so in the comprehensive plan at present, uh, what this site that we're going to be talking about tonight has on it is not one of these standard districts, but it has the, I'll jump ahead to this, uh, a designation that's described as future planning area, and it says, these are areas for which there's not a definite land use recommendation in this document, and this is the comprehensive plan that we adopted, not before twenty twenty-one. But would be subject to further public planning activities for any development movements would occur. I think the community has spoken that they would really like to see uh, uh, future land use designation created for this site, and so that is what we're attempting to do through this effort. So the language that would be in this um, document is right here in front of you, I think a lot of folks have seen the early drafts of this, and the stakeholder groups saw it and made some comments on it, and we can kind of show you how it evolved from that time. But um, I thought I would just kind of go ahead and read through it here for a second, just so it's in the record, and so everybody's thinking about it as it goes through, so bear with me for a second, uh, so it says that this is our, our urban waterfront future land use district, this district description, and these are vibrant and inclusive mixed-use districts that are located along portions of the peninsula waterfront and areas designated as neighborhood and city centers, so that's some of the nearby land use designations to this site. Development in these areas preserves Charleston's rich and cul- rich cultural and maritime heritage and facilitates recreational, civic, and economic connections between urban areas and the waterfront. Building and site design prioritizes resilience, or that's been something that we've all experienced a lot of emphasis on that, and the entire comprehensive plan uh, talks about that, so I, building and site design prioritizes, prioritizes resilience, maintains continuous public access along the waterfront in coordination with the perimeter protection, and that's the idea of the um barrier wall, or, or as Mayor Collegeville says, the extended battery. Um, it creates public access and street view corridors toward the water, and is compatible with the city skyline. There are mixed uses, including a variety of housing types for residents of diverse incomes, civic, commercial, outdoor, public gathering places, and opportunities for small and local businesses. The waterfront is activated with public parks and open spaces, as well as restaurants, events, and other public and commercial uses that engage and serve the Charleston community. Maritime, recreational, and transportation uses are encouraged on a scale consistent with landside uses for place prior cargo and cruise ship uses. Block pattern, street design, and building scale enassing, which will include varying heights and densities, are compatible to the neighboring commercial and residential districts, create a properly scaled extension to the city. So that is what staff, based on the comments we've seen uh, to the earlier draft, um, and, and our kind of massaging and trying to make it read a little bit better and cohesive, um, has, has come up with, and that is what we're presenting to you all for your recommendation on to City Council. Again, this would be a change from the future planning area, we'll go to the map, these are just some of the categories that we have here, but at present, on the left, you see the map that shows the current, which is the future planning area that's in the gray, surrounded by the uh, yellow box. And then on the right would become the new designation of the urban waterfront, and then just a little blow up of the site, so you can see in detail that it is, of course, the Union Pier site with the um, Gadsden Borough Neighborhood and buildings and park to the north, and then uh, the market area to the south, Anson Borough to the west, and East Bay to the west, and then the waterfront to the east. Um, and that is the uh, both the text amendment and the map amendment that would be part of this comprehensive plan amendment. And um, and this is the uh, original draft that was shown at stakeholder meeting, and then the final draft that I just read you with some of the changes that were made from that input and from staff working on it a little bit. And um, we are recommending for this, and would be happy to answer questions or uh, have more discussion on it, as you all see that. Okay, thank you. Since the city is the applicant, we will now go to uh, those who want to comment, is uh, anyone like to be heard in favor of the compliment? Yes, sir.
My name is Ed Holsther, H O L S T H E R. I'm a board member of Anson Borough Neighborhood Association, but I'm not speaking for the association because we're waiting for more details before we have any kind of input, uh, a little counter input. The um, I'm speaking as an individual a little bit, because I live at sixty-five Anson Street. But mostly, I'm speaking to my grandchildren who live on James Island. Eventually, they're going to um, probably adhere to my house, and I won't be around when that happens, of course. Others speak up quickly, but still alive. Um, but anyway, they're doing their homework right now, calling their proxy. Um, because this plan is going to go for a long time into the future, and I hope we get this thing started with a good foundation. And with all due respect to Mr. Lusane, who is self-described urbanist, I would like to be in favor of this plan as more of a neighborist than an urbanist, and I'm a little disappointed about what happened in Anson and backflip recently. The flooding there also is something else that we need to consider um, with this Union Pier. When the previous proposed owners were talking about the development, I was one of their colleagues, and I asked them, what, what do you think about the possibility of, of a spring tide or hurricane pushing water through the existing uh, water, water stormwater system back up into the neighborhood and making things even worse? Because Anson Borough is mainly, at most, twelve feet above sea level, and a lot of it down by the market is way below that. Um, and the person I was talking to, he said, we hadn't thought about that. And I'm thinking, you better think, I said, you better think about it fast, you need to put it in some kind of a flat valve that prevents the backup of, of the harbor into the neighborhoods, and it could be a one-way flat valve, the neighborhood's flooding could run down to the, to the harbor, but these people hadn't thought about it, I would just suggest that we all, when you're looking at details of what kind of flooding prevention is involved in this new proposal for Union Pier, better look at that too, not flood. You all know about our opponents, um, issues about traffic and things like that, and that, that really needs to be looked at hard. Um, and I won't waste your time, because you know, we think about all those things, the traffic, noise, when they grind up the pavement, existing blacktop pavement there and the concrete there, maybe major air pollution, which already had plenty of already. I used to live on Iowa Palms, there's no air pollution over there, but we sure get a lot of dust in Anson Borough. Paying taxes in this county since nineteen eighty, so I've lived in three other places besides Anson Borough, so I think I know a little bit what I'm talking about. Um, and the only other thing to say is uh, the height restriction which is mentioned, and I've certainly endorsed that, because this is the holy city with a few remaining steeples above the skyline, not very many, but some, and we want to keep it that way. I, I don't propose that we end up with a waterfront, which is like uh, New York City, um, where little historic Trinity Church next to the World Trade Center is totally dwarfed by all the high rises and waterfront. I want to change the name of this thing, um, instead of Urban Waterfront District, you know, say something like a uh, slightly urban waterfront district. I think that, you know, like people can play with the name and say urban, oh yeah, well, look at New York City, but yeah, look at Manolos, Maryland, where there is much better planning, it's an old English colonial town, and they don't have high rises all around that place. We can have, we can keep our place the same too, if we plan ahead and, and try to be sort of urbanist, light, or slightly urban. That's my comment, thank you for your time, and good luck with your deliberations.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard in favor of the application?
Good evening, good to see everybody, uh, my name is Winslet Hasty, I'm the President and CEO of Historic Charleston Foundation. And first of all, I just want to thank um, the city, I want to thank the planning department, uh, folks at City Hall, who have been very engaged with Historic Charleston Foundation and our broader advocacy coalition, uh, that's been working hard at this project, as you all know, for years. Um, because this is exactly what we were hoping for in the last go-round, not with the Sasaki Riley Center team, but with the, the low plan. Um, we were very concerned about a, a major redevelopment plan coming forward to the city with a sort of cipher around the area with no indication from the city about what its vision for this site should be. Um, and, and we felt that really, it, it didn't provide tools for the Planning Commission nor City Council to really measure uh, the development proposal against something. And so now, we're going to have something to measure this proposal against. And um, you know, you got to remember, these future land use de- uh, designations are very high level, they're thirty thousand feet, kind of providing a framework, and really projecting values about what we want to see in a development. It's not, you know, where you get into the nitty-gritty on where different heights are going to be, or what the form of buildings are, or where exactly where parks are going to go, um, but it provides a list of values, and we feel very strongly that this, and I know it's not an easy effort. I am also part of the Stakeholder Committee, and there was a lot of back and forth on trying to massage this language, and I feel the city was very responsive to our comments, and I feel like this has done as good a job as you can do in a relatively short paragraph. Um, to summarize those values that we think are most important, and, and just to for you all to remind you, and I know I probably don't need to, but you know, the values are really around uh, a focus on resilience, obviously, being on the waterfront, it's also about you know, focusing on good urban design that is a true extension of the city. We talk a lot about, you know, extending this, the fabric of the historic district to the water and being able to accomplish that, and uh, we think that is incredibly important. Obviously, uh, creating ample public uh, parks and open space along the waterfront. There's obviously restrictions, both from the state and the federal government, as to what you can do that's uh, outbound and critical line. So, you know, that it really is reserved for public space or maritime uses, so it's pretty clear there. So we know we're going to get, I mean, almost half of this site is on decking out over the water, and so we know we're going to get an incredibly huge contribution to our public realm that'll continue our sort of emerald necklace of sorts around the uh, perimeter of our beautiful peninsula, so um, I think this does an excellent job, and I just want to say thank you to uh, to the city and to the folks who were a part of this, um, it's not easy, but I think this encapsulates what we want, we look forward to working with the development team and the BMOG team on um, the next phase of this, which is, you know, getting into more of the uh, uh, details to the extent we can at this juncture and, and having that broader conversation. So uh, thank you and we will support.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard in favor? Come on up, sir, thank you.
Hello, commissioners, um, Sam Spence from the Preservation Society of Charleston, um, piggybacking a little bit on Winslow's uh, sentiments, I want to kind of reiterate that this is a big step, uh, not just for the recommendation that we urge you to make tonight, but because it does recommend, or does uh, represent, as Christopher said, the kind of culmination of years of discussion about this project, I think most of y'all were at that Planning Commission meeting at the Bruce Terminal in June of twenty-three, I guess. Um, and so we're thankful to be here to urge y'all to make a recommendation for this, with an eye on what's next, uh. Obviously, better specificity around this from future planning area to urban waterfront is uh, far preferable to provide y'all some context and, and city planners' context to make future decisions. The draft text points to key policy points, uh, like cultural and heritage preservation, compatible and dynamic urban design, mixed-use housing for affordability, connections to other areas of the city, and, and more. And we're also very encouraged to see in the text the focus on the importance of public space, and it's not just parks, it's access, access to the water, access to our history through civic and public gathering places, and this is something I think we're all kind of basically on the same, on the same page about. But the designation, I will point out, makes very clear that the Urban Waterfront District puts a very strong priority on this public realm. And so the area that's tagged right now, urban waterfront, is currently zoned light industrial, which means y'all are probably going to get a rezoning request on this sometime soon, that could come in the form of a PUD like it did last time, or piecemeal, and just, you know, individual rezonings. And this is a complex site with a lot of challenges, including potential impacts to public trust lands along the coastline, as Winslow mentioned. And, you know, just keep in mind, the Planning Commission can use this designation with the rezoning process to reinforce those fundamental protections for the coastline uh, on the critical line and over the critical line, and that's a key task, y'all have one forward on this. And there aren't many projects, I think, as Christopher said, that have catalyzed public interest quite like this one. It's, it's got everyone's attention, and we're hopeful, as this conversation continues, that this designation provides continued progress forward.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard in favor? Come on up.
Hey, you all, I'm Miller Parker, and I've worked for BMOG, and then worked with Ben Navarro, he appeared, thank you for taking the time to give me an opportunity to speak. Um, we spent many hours over the past few months talking and thinking about the potential of this important piece of property. And Ben and his wife, Kelly, have personally been involved and invested in making sure that this is a pro- uh, an opportunity that benefits the Charleston community and that people are excited about, so we're starting at that place. Um, but in addition to dreaming about the possibilities of this important site, um, we're also studying the history of the properties involved in prior plans and stakeholder engagement that have been gone into it, we recognize that this is far from a blank slate. Um, the second focus of our, our team is to, to build a team, um, and we wanted to start that with a group that understands Charleston, um, and the significance of this opportunity for all of us. Uh, two of those members are here in the audience, Christian Satillo and James Wilson. Uh, we're also meeting with a, a number of other local and world-renowned public space, resiliency, and engineering experts to ensure that we're getting the best thinking for this important property. Um, we're thankful for the city and, and Christopher and the, and the city staff, all of the stakeholders who uh, came in to help draft this uh, language for the comprehensive plan. To us, it seemed consistent with all that we've heard and had through all of that prior stakeholder engagement, and it also aligns with our goals. So we're excited to move forward with the next step, um, and humbled to have the opportunity to do so. Um, over the next few weeks, you'll see us um, start to continue to build our design team, but we'll also start our public outreach and community engagement on this, for to ramp that up. Um, I'll close with, we recognize that the importance of this task, and, and we're committed to working hard and listening carefully and being patient, so we look forward to working with you all through this process.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to be heard on this matter? Anybody?
Anybody? Oh.
Very quick. I'm Steve Peters. I'm the vice president of Hannah. So I'm not speaking on behalf of Hannah, just myself. There's a lot of talk about this development. I get it. It's exciting. But we will be the most impacted without a doubt. We've got to start thinking about that east to west traffic. It's going to come from King and meeting to the water and back. It's obvious we're going to create a destination. People are going to want to go there. The city's got to do this. This is not BMO's job. They won't. They won't be able to get ahead of that. And all I ever hear is it's a state problem, state roads. So somehow we've got to get our officials to get the state to get down here so we can get ahead of it. If we start to develop that and then we go, we'll figure it out later. Hannah, our neighborhood Hannah, is going to be a thoroughfare. They're going to destroy it. So I'm in favor of it. I want to see it done. I'm excited about it. I think it'll help all of us. Access to water is a great thing. But we need to start thinking about the areas directly impacted. And we will be impacted without a doubt. Just think about the traffic half flows, right? So please think on that and please let's get the state involved. Seems like they're the only ones that can do anything about the roads. If we start today, maybe we can get ahead of it. Okay, I know this might be easy. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else?
Thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. My name is Anna Kimmelblatt and I serve as the Communities and Transportation Program Director of the Coastal Conservation League. The league appreciates the opportunity to provide comments on the proposed description for the urban waterfront district, which will be applicable to Union Pier. While we recognize that this description is already longer than most, we do feel that more emphasis could be placed on resilience, open space and the prioritization of green infrastructure. Additionally, every effort should be made to ensure that new development is consistent with the historic nature of the surrounding areas. Water access should be guaranteed beyond the proposed perimeter protection and areas beyond the critical line should remain in the public trust. This description is exceptionally important, given the sensitive locations of the areas it applies to, and therefore we think additional detail is warranted. The Union Pier redevelopment project is a valuable opportunity for the city and must be approached with resilience at the forefront in order for it to continue to be a valuable resource for many years to come. There is no doubt that Charleston is a city that is intimately linked to the water. We urge the commission to embrace that linkage and advocate for usable open space, green infrastructure and connectivity throughout the Union Pier redevelopment process. Examples such as Mowgli Park in Boston and Brooklyn Bridge Park in New York have demonstrated what is possible with an urban waterfront. The developers of Union Pier should be held to an equally high standard and be required to implement innovative and cutting edge flood mitigation technologies and development practices. Given the sensitive nature of the Union Pier site on the Charleston Peninsula, it is of the utmost importance that the development proceeds in a way that complements both the historic neighborhoods and natural environment of the area, while also incorporating resilience measures to ensure the protection of the site in the future. Provided that the city works with the developer to prioritize substantial green space, natural infrastructure and innovative resilience techniques, the league is confident that Union Pier can be redeveloped into a thriving mixed use hub where all citizens can enjoy waterfront access and take advantage of all the site will have to offer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to be heard in favor of the comp plan amendment? No one else in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, seeing none. The public hearing is over and are there comments from the commission?
So I think this is a really great proposal and I do, I don't think we're going to be taking comments on on the drafting of the notes potentially, but I do think we do need to have a strong emphasis on resilience. You know, I've been to Antarctica and I've been to the ice cap in Greenland and anytime I hear about a glacier that's moving or dropping off or calving off an iceberg or the melting, it makes me nervous, very nervous. So while that's years and years away, it's still that rising water and how we handle that for years to come is going to be very significant. So I think the importance on resilience is is a critical part of this piece.
I agree and I'm thrilled to see this come before us. Everything that everybody said in the audience, we agree with. I was one of the sole, with the exception of Mr. Bailey, that said no at that lovely meeting that we had in June of twenty twenty three. And and I, it was, it was a ridiculous proposal and I look forward to working with with Ben and with y'all and the group and and thrilled to move my, put my approval for this proposal. And this is a zoning question.
Any other discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion for approval and I'm in full support.
Ms. Harrison makes a motion and second to that, Ms. Brian Jenkins. All those in favor of the of the comp plan amendment for the water urban waterfront district say aye. Any opposed? Twenty seven in favor and none opposed.
You shouldn't do it.
Okay. Thanks very much. Next, we have the zonings.
Number one, eight thirty four Wapu Road is deferred. So number two, I believe we have to take that one by itself. So seventeen thirty eight Three Oaks Avenue in West Ashley, TMS number three five zero zero two zero zero one one seven, approximately four five point four five acres. Request zoning from RO to Duop area overlay zoning district like commercials.
Yeah, Mr. Morgan.
This is in our Duop plan area and the county has an overlay. And so that's why it's designated in Duop RO. But if you come in the city, we also have participated in that plan and we're following along with it. And so we would donate with the RO residential office. Here it is in the image here, map image shift off off the road behind other offices. And you can see the structure. It's currently used as an office and we're recommending rules for that.
Well, I guess there's no one to speak either in favor or against this item. So it closes the public hearing. Do I hear any discussion or motion?
Make the motion for approval.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? I have it six zero.
So let me read those into the record. Sixteen oh nine Point Setia Road, West Ashley, TMS number three five one one two zero zero two zero three, approximately two point two five acres. Request zoning of single family residential, zone R one in the county. Number four, two one six seven Pinehurst Avenue, West Ashley, TMS number three five eight one five zero 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 four two. Approximately point three three acres, request zoning of single family residential, zoned residential R four in Charleston County. Number five, two four six three Birkenhead Drive, West Ashley, TMS number three zero nine one three zero 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 two six, approximately point three one acres, request zoning of single family residential, zone R four in Charleston County. Number six, one nine three one Capri Drive, West Ashley, TMS number three five zero one four zero 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 four four, approximately point three eight acres, request zoning of single family residential, zone R four in the county. Morgan.
And as Mr. Lassane said, these are all coming in the city from the SR one, I'm sorry, from the R four district in Charleston County to SR one. And they're all existing single family residences. So.
Anyone want to speak in favor or against? Public hearing is over. Do we have motion?
I make a motion to approve number three, four, five and six.
Thanks very much. Second. Brian Jenkins makes the motion. All those in favor say aye. I say aye. Anybody opposed? No opposed. Motion passes. P P and S updates.
Yeah, and as you all may have heard, we are are holding off on our zoning meetings and our peaceful plan meeting that we had planned for February and March. We're working on a broader initiative through the mayor's office to look at things beyond just the zoning and the planning world, but looking at transportation, infrastructure, affordability of housing, our green space initiatives. This is kind of precipitated by the what happened with the handset sales tax though in the fall. And so the mayor's office would like us to take a broader look and we're working on all these things and present to the public a kind of cohesive vision going forward that involves both what changes we're going to make to zoning and what changes we would have for water and resilience and for affordable housing and for green space and all those types of things. We are gathering data on that right now through across multiple departments here. Mr. Martin, who was just in here a minute ago, was kind of heading that up. And we've got multiple city departments working on it. And what we anticipate is that we'll go out with a broader view of some of these changes later this year. We don't have a timeframe yet, but we'll know better in a couple of months. And that's going to be our approach going forward on the zoning work.
So both of them are moving ahead. They're just moving on a different timeline.
Right. And we aren't going to start with the public engagement because I think the feeling was that we were setting ourselves up for a lot of different types of public engagement when that all needed to be brought in together. Because there's going to be a lot of public engagement about what our next steps are for transportation in our region. Because obviously the handset sales tax failed, so a new effort would be going forward and this would be a big part of that.
So before we have an opportunity to look at any drafts or anything that y'all are working on prior to just meeting here, you know.
Oh, yeah. All the stuff will come to you all before it comes anywhere to the public or anything like that. You know, all that's been drafted so far in reference to the zoning words, for example, is just the concepts of the new districts that would be in there. And that's what we were going to kind of roll out with in those meetings we planned for February and March. We're going to hold on those, see how those relate to this broader view. Maybe there need to be some tweaks on that. And then that'll all come to you all. So you can see it before it goes public. Sorry for that delay, but you know, the mayor kind of is realizing that with the handset sales tax, the the real need that we're going to have for it coming up in two years, that we need a broad approach and really need to look at all these different areas.
So the county is thinking two years from now to come.
They have to do it in a general election year, so it would be twenty twenty six. Yeah, I mean, they don't have, it can't be in the off year, in other words, it can't be in like twenty twenty five. So, yeah.
All right. Anybody else?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.